Okay, I called to order the, at this time, the city council meeting. But before we get into the city council meeting, I have a proclamation to read. Again, it's a distinct honor for, for the city of Corinth to have another one of its citizens raised to the level of Eagle Scout. I attended the ceremony the other night. Very informative and, and again, I was so impressed with all the different things that the scouts do in our community. And it's, it's just amazing to sit there and watch all the different badges that were, merit badges that were handed out and, and especially to participate in, in the Eagle Scout here. So I'll read the proclamation and then he's going to lead us in the pledges and then Bob's going to do the invocation. Okay, "From the office of the mayor of Corinth, Texas, whereas the Boy Scouts of America was founded in, on February 8th, 1910, has grown to be a vital force in the development of our youth through its many programs which encourage the, the ability of its members to do things for themselves and others. Whereas the Boy Scouts of America serves many through a wide variety of activities designed to complement and implement the youth programs offered by churches, civic organizations, and public schools. Whereas Luke Douglas Davison, a Boy Scout troop 424, recently earned the rank of Eagle Scout on July 29th, 2021. Whereas as Scott, as a scout, Luke served both his troop and the Lake City's community in a variety of leadership roles, including volunteering with Keep Corinth Beautiful, spring litter cleanup, litter removal on Dobbs Road, and trimming and pruning over 100 trees along Lake Sharon Drive. Whereas the Eagle Scout Award has been awarded for over 100 years to a small number of young men who accomplish its requirements and demonstrate community leadership. And whereas Luke, Eagle Scout Community Service Projects entailed renovating an unused building at Sycamore Bend Park in Hickory Creek, creating a nature center to educate schools and campers on local plants and habitat. Now therefore, I, Bill Hydeman, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of Corinth, Texas, do hereby honor Luke Douglas Davison for his leadership and service to his community and applaud his rank as Eagle Scout." We please come from, forward and then we'll take a picture. And if you want to say a few words, you got, you got the microphone.
Thank you. I'm really glad that I had the chance to help out the city of Corinth. And I'm really glad that I got my Eagle Scout and I plan to continue helping the city. And I hope to join, what's it called again? The, Yak. Yeah, Yak. I hope to join Yak and help more with the youth in the city.
Very good.
Congratulations.
And then Ms. Bundelmeier will give a shake your hand. And then Ms. Bundelmeier will get a picture of us and we'll get you on front page news.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Would everybody stand? We'll just play.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Lord, we pause tonight to, to give you thanks and, and Lord, we recognize your sovereignty over all things and Lord, we ask for your wisdom and discernment and counsel as they go about making decisions tonight. And Lord, we also rejoice in the recognition for Luke Davison tonight, for the, for the work that he's done and, and the family that, that he represents for, for both he and his sister Piper, for their contributions and, and leadership within the community. And Lord, at this time of year, we pause to give you especially thanks for, as we move into the Christmas season, Lord, and, and for the birth of Christ and, and for his life and death, for our salvation. We just thank you for all of these things and it's in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Thank you. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Comments about any of the council's agenda items or appreciated by the council may be taken into consideration at this time or during that agenda item. Council is prohibited from acting on or discussing items brought before them at this time. Do we have any? Okay, thank you. Consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted in one motion. Should the mayor or council member desire discussion of any item, that item will be removed from consent agenda and will be considered separately. I'd entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. Business agenda. Consider an act on an ordinance amending the section 52.07, garbage collection fees of the Corinth Code of Ordinances relating to charges for certain refuse and recycling services, providing that this ordinance shall be cumulative of all ordinances of the city of Corinth, providing a savings clause and providing an effective date. Mr. Hart.
Yes, Mayor and Council, there are two, two components of, in terms of the presentation here. With respect to the ordinance, I'll, I'm going to have our finance director, Leanne Bundelmeier, to come up. But prior to that, we have Paul Hanson, who's the general manager for CWD, and Nicole Raymer, who is the liaison with the local governments. So they're both here from CWD. Like to have them talk to you about their rate request. And then if you have any questions on the ordinance, so that's component, then Leanne will be available to answer those questions.
Mayor, Council, thank you for having us here tonight. I know, I'm like, my height. How do I kiss them? Okay. Do I need to do something? Is it like under the, oh, oh, I'm sorry. You're good. There we go. And then, oh gosh. Window, oh, no. Gosh, no. I just did it. That's my edge. Oh, gosh. Come on. Is it good? Okay, thank you. Mayor, Council, thank you for having us here tonight. My name's Nicole Raymer. I'm the municipal director directly over the city of Corinth. And I have here with me Paul Hanson, our general manager. And we're here to discuss the annual rate adjustment. At first, I want to go over some of the challenges that CWD's had over the past year and a half or so. A lot of cities are having a lot of questions about what's going on, just in regards to the pandemic, how has it affected us and what are we doing about it to move forward? So first off, we had the pandemic that hit March 2020. As everybody knows, if you can see the chart here, it shows monthly, monthly cases that we've had at CWD of employees who have tested positive and then been required to take their two weeks off. Fortunately, everybody has been able to come back and nobody's suffered any, any further illnesses. So you can see, we started in April with two cases. We spiked January of 2021 with 20. And then this August, we had a random spike of 18, which we don't know why all of a sudden it spiked in August, but we had 18 people out during the month of August. Overall, CWD has had 98 employees out due to pandemic. This ranges from customer service reps to drivers, to helpers, to mechanics. The pandemic brought increased trash volumes throughout the metroplex. CWD services 187,000 homes in the DFW area, utilizing 85 vehicles. We've noticed, or we've calculated, the volumes have increased by 18% overall, not specific to Corinth, but just overall, between all of our cities. We have an 18% increase of tonnage at the curb. Just when we thought things couldn't get worse, 2021 came and we had the February FEMA-declared natural disaster. I know it's almost been a year now, so it feels a little weird talking about it, but it did impact us drastically. We looked at the tonnages six weeks before the disaster and the six weeks post and saw a 34% increase of materials at the curb throughout all of our cities. We, you know, we did expect a lot of the damages to the homes, but what we didn't expect was like the dead shrubs and the leaves and the foliage that is still continuing to be set out as landscapers are trying to get the supplies in and replace people's yards. Then we took a look at our customer service calls by month. You look at our pre-pandemic, this is of course for all of our cities. We're right around 11, almost 12,000 calls per month. Right at March 2020 during that, right in the middle of pandemic, we jumped up. The disaster almost doubled from pre-pandemic. So from 2019 to February 2021, we saw our calls completely double for a full six weeks. And then we are slowly making our way back down, which is good. Currently, we're at about 13 and a half thousand calls per month. As I'm sure you guys are experiencing within your current jobs and within the city, we've had major labor shortage issues this year specifically. Our applications have dropped over 50, 50% since pre-pandemic. We are doing lots of things internally to get those applications back up and we are seeing a positive return on that. But you can see in 2020, we were at about 95 and then this year, we went down to 70 applications per month. So really struggling to get people in the door to want to come and work for us. So this is some specific information in regards to the city of Corinth. The trash tonnage that we're at, that was at the curb within, within your homes, the pre-pandemic versus the post-pandemic, we saw about a 4% increase. So while it doesn't sound too drastic, it's still 4% more than we have anticipated, 4% more that we didn't have staffed or trucks to immediately handle. And then post-February disaster, we had an additional 9%. So six weeks, well, February, March, and March, we had about a significant increase. And then the grievances per month, we measure this for every 1,000 service opportunity. So every 1,000 homes we drive by, we estimate the average service opportunity, service grievance would be one call per every 1,000 homes that we drive by. You can see that Corinth has been pretty steady since pre-pandemic to current. It did increase with the pandemic and with the disaster and it is starting to decline a little bit to back toward 2019 numbers. That does not mean that we are where we want to be, but it is, it's good to see that things are slowly becoming, slowly getting back to normal. So what is CWD doing to battle all of these issues? We sent a letter in April, kind of outlining some of this stuff. I hope all of you got it. In June, we increased our driver helper wage by 18%. This was an outsized pay increase. We've never had to do it before. I think it amounts to $500,000 increase a year. In June, we upped our customer service wages by 25%. We have increased our recruitment efforts by 250%. We're doing more billboards. We're doing, we raised our driver hiring bonus significantly, I think up to $10,000 and whatnot. We have commercials, we, or radio commercials, we have staffing agencies working onsite as well as offsite. We are doing an extreme amount of efforts just to get people in the door and it, it is working. We are seeing more applications come in now and we're thankful for that. In April, May, we purchased five new trucks. We just decided that this was absolutely necessary to keep up with the volumes. Those five trucks are not necessarily dedicated to Corinth, they're overall to service all of our municipalities. In July, one of the biggest things that we did was increase our customer service staffing by 100%. We went from nine agents to 18 agents. So we did have a little bit of hiccups the first couple of months. This is, I think, I guess in July, yeah. In July, so July, August, we, we were doing a lot of training in-house with our new agents, but everybody is staffed up. We are excited and calls are going down, wait times are going down, hold times are decreasing a lot. And all of this was also presented in the letter that, a second letter that you received on November 19th. So to say, all of the stuff that I just mentioned, none of that has anything to do with the rate adjustment. And we feel it's very important to say because while we've had to increase our cost internally as a company to maintain the level of service that our customers expect from us, it is not something that's being projected into the rate adjustment. The rate adjustment is strictly the model that is built into the contract and it's based on the three indices that are listed here, the CPI, you, the fuel, and the disposal. The reason why you will see this year, we have quite an increased rate adjustment that's quite significant. CPI is at the all-time high. I think in 2011, it was like 1%. So it is, it's high, it's all over. All of our cities are experiencing this significant increase. The fuel is drastically up. I mean, I know whenever you go fuel up your car, I just fueled up. I mean, it's, it's outrageous, but the good thing with fuels, it definitely can come down and we hope that, that it will go down in the future. And then disposal is about average at a 5% increase. So I just listed out the 2021 rates, a couple of the 2021 rates versus the 22 rates with the new adjustment calculated in there. And I know that was really fast, but I am happy to answer any questions. And Paul is happy to answer any questions regarding operations, service, trucks.
Can you go back to the late page?
Absolutely. Okay. There we go. It's about a 9% increase. A little bit over. Oh, did I just go?
Are there any other questions? Did you have one? Ms. Henderson? No. Are there any other questions from council? Again. Paul, we let you off the hook tonight.
No, we do have a new supervisor in Corinth just recently, so, but we're excited about him and he's been with us for a long time. He's just been promoted to supervisor. He actually was a driver out here at one point, so, but yes, but we're excited about him coming on to also help out, increase, improve service and, and take care of, take care of things out here.
Did he, was he out at the recycle event? Yeah, I visited with him.
A couple of people met him out there.
I really like the emails you guys send us when you do promote someone or hire someone. You know, that way it lets us know who they are if we see them out, you know, in, in our neighborhoods. I do have one question. How do you monitor the trash and the recycle? Because I've had a couple of calls about recycling being put into the trash trucks. So how do you monitor that that doesn't happen?
So normally is what they do is they pick up the trash and then they go, go to Denton landfill, dump, and then they come back and they pick up the recycling with the same truck. And then the truck goes to our facility where we have a recycling center and they dump there and we process it there. So they, they should never mix trash and recycling. If we ever hear about someone doing that, then we take that very seriously. Obviously, that, not what we want. And so we investigate that and act appropriately if, if that happens. So if we, if you ever hear about that, please let us know immediately. And, and then there are, sometimes there's a little confusion. Sometimes like if there's a TV box and the TV box is completely full of styrofoam, you know, sometimes somebody sees that and, oh wait, that's going in the trash truck. The guys know, hey, well, we put that in the trash if it's, if, if it has the styrofoam in it because, so there, so sometimes there's little situations like that or someone sees the same truck and they think, oh, they're picking up our recycling with the trash. But like I said, that, they absolutely should not be doing that. And we also pro, send, we send you a monthly report showing our reci, the recycling numbers every month and we monitor that and you can usually see that it stays very steady. So if, if, if we were, you know, if there were anything significant happening, those numbers would drop substantially. But, but that's, that's one other way to look at it.
I'd like to say thank you to both of y'all. I had a call from a concerned citizen the other day and sent an email to you in about two hours. He was taken care of, so thank you. You made me look like a hero.
Well, good, very good. I, like I said, and anytime, anything, you know, and Bob texts me sometimes later, whenever, but if you ever have anything like that, please let us know because that's, we're in the service business and as you can imagine, right now with hiring and everything, it's, it's very challenging and, you know, it's every day, it's, we're training and working to put the best crews on the street we can, but we do mess up. And, you know, but the key is, how do you, what do you do after you mess up? And that's what we, we try to be very, you know, as quickly as possible, get back and take care of it and respond and communicate. That's, that's the, so, but, yeah, I do promise you, we do screw up. It's a tough business. It really is. And, but we appreciate y'all's business and, you know, I think if you look at your current residents, the trash rates are incredibly affordable relative to some of the communities around you. I think Denton's trash rate double of what Corinth is if you're, if you're a homeowner. So just, you know, there, there's some, there's some positive. I know the dollar increase isn't what anybody wants, but you get, the city has done a really good job of managing your, your trash and you get a lot of value for your, for your dollar.
We also appreciate you helping us in our Keep Corinth Beautiful, like, or the, the city of Corinth cleanup. That was, you know, coming down there and putting your vehicles there and recycling just about everything. So it, again, we appreciate your support there, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right?
Mayor, the, the ordinance that you have in front of you provides for a 9.3% increase that was requested. That translates on a, for residential customer of $1.14 per month and for a senior, be $1.1 per month.
Any questions? All right. I would entertain a motion to consider an act on the ordinance of the city of Corinth approving an amendment to the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget, an annual program of services to provide expenditures of funds to pay for garbage service and providing an effective date. I'd entertain a motion on that item.
Mayor, I would move to approve ordinance number 21-12-16-30, amending section, section 52.07, garbage collection fees relating to charges for certain refuse and recycling services.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. We appreciate you. Okay, item number 10, consider an act and, and authorizing the execution of chapter 380 Economic Development Agreement with Wolverine Interest LLC for the development of a mixed-use development in Agora of Corinth. Mr. Hart.
I'm sorry, Mayor. We need to go back to number nine. And that's the budget ordinance dealing with the, the rate.
Just did it.
What we needed eight.
What's that?
We did, of eight. Eight is the ordinance to do the increase and then nine is an ordinance so we can.
Okay, we need to do nine?
We need to do nine now.
Okay. All right. I'd entertain a motion on item number nine.
Mayor, I would move to approve ordinance number 21-12-16-31, approving amendment to the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget, an annual program for services to provide expenditures of funds to pay the garbage services.
Second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Okay, item number 10. Consider an act on authorizing the execution of chapter 380 Economic Development Agreement with Wolverine Interest LLC for the development of a mixed-use development in the Agora Corinth, Agora at Corinth. Mr. Hart.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I'd like to have our economic development director, Elise Back, to lay out this item for you. We also have, are you on interest, Jim and Nadia? We have, representing Wolverine is Jim Leslie and Nadia Christian. And so they're here and let the three of them lay out this item for you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Before you have the chapter 380 Economic Development Agreement with Wolverine between the city and the EDC for the development of a mixed-use project at the Agora at Corinth to, to help facilitate the development, this EDC and the city are proposing to provide economic development program incentives in, in, sorry, program incentives for grants and rebates to Wolverine. The grants and rebates will be tied to certain investment requirements as well as other performance requirements required by Wolverine. And those are as follows. Wolverine will invest a minimum of $30 million in total development costs, including land acquisition for the project. They will close on the site on or before July 30th of 2022, as well as go through the zoning process on or before July 30th of 2022. All construction completion improvements will be done on or before December of 2026. The project itself includes 300 multifamily units, 30,000 square feet of commercial space encompassing office, resident, retail, and restaurant. There will be a parking garage of 150 spaces, of which 75 will be allocated for public use. And we're hoping to create at least 15 jobs on the site specifically for those commercial uses. The economic development incentives include the reimbursement of sales and use tax that will be generated by Wolverine during the construction phase. So that will be over a 36-month period, as well as reimbursement of building permit fees and inspection. The EDC board held their board meeting on December 13th in which they recommended that council execute the chapter 380 agreement with Wolverine. And staff is recommending that council approve the 380 agreement with Wolverine Interest as presented.
Are there any questions from the council? Are there any questions from the council?
You said perhaps 15 jobs. Is it in the 380 agreement 15 jobs or is, oh, okay.
And that would be associated with the retail and restaurant portion of the development.
At least how many single family? Did you say any single, you said 1,200 multi?
No, 300 multifamily.
350?
No, 300. Did I say 1,200? No, 300. 300, 300 multifamily, 30,000 square feet of, um, commercial space. 30,000. And the developer, Nadia and Jim are here if you have any questions for them.
I have a question, if I may. The item A, the reimbursement of the sales tax during construction, help me understand that.
So what they're gonna do, obviously they're gonna be purchasing, it could be paint, they have to, um, pay sales tax on that. So anything that, so we base the figure off of they're spending 30 million, it's, um, 1.5% comes out to 450,000. So that's just on sales tax related to the city and the EDC only. So during the construction, that 36-month, you know, they're gonna buy paint or lumber or anything that they pay sales tax on, they're going to be, um, submit their direct permit and information to the state and to us and then they can be reimbursed on those taxes that would, are supposed to come to the city and the EDC, up to a maximum of 450.
Okay, I'm gonna get in the weeds here, if I, if I may. So if you're, when your construction workers goes to Denton, to Home Depot and buys something that has sales tax, is that included?
Yes.
Uh, let me jump in here. See, what happens is they get a direct use permit. So when they go to Denton and buy it, it's gonna be consumed or used in Corinth.
Here in Corinth.
So it's taxed here and it's that increment that is being refunded.
Thank you. That's what I needed.
We just have to declare Corinth as decided for the sales tax. And so a lot of, most of the, uh, sales tax will be on the big ticket items like lumber and stuff like that. And our general contractor would declare Corinth as decided so the sales tax will, will pay it to the state, then the state will pay it back to Corinth and then we'll get some rebate of that. That's how it works. It's kind of technical, but we gotta make sure the general contractor does it properly, separates out the labor from the materials.
Are there any other questions in council? Okay. All right. I'd entertain a motion on that item.
Mayor, I would move to approve the chapter 380 agreement with Wolverine Interest LLC as presented, authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute the necessary document.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. Okay. Item number 11, consider an act on the unimproved property contract with Wolverine Interest LLC for the sale of 4.692 acres of Wolverine, to Wolverine for a mixed-use development and authorize the execution of necessary documents by the mayor or his designee. Mr. Hart.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I'd like to have, uh, our Economic Development Director, Elise Back, to lay out this item for you.
So before you, you have the sales and purchased, um, contract with Wolverine Interest for the purchase of 4.692 acres for their mixed, potential mixed-use development. To facilitate the mixed-use development, the EDC is selling the 4.692 acres to Wolverine for $7.05 per square foot, which equates to approximately 1.4 million dollars. And Wolverine is anticipating closing on the property on or before July, um, 30th of next year. The EDC board held their board meeting on December the 13th and recommended that council execute the contract with Wolverine and staff recommends the approval of the contract as presented.
Does anybody have any questions on this item?
I do, Mayor, if I may. Um, it says that the seller agrees to pay the broker, buyer broker to Wolverine Interest LLC. Are they licensed brokers in the state of Texas, Wolverine?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I'd entertain a motion on that item.
I'll make a motion to approve the unimproved property contract with Wolverine Interest for the sale of 4.692 acres to Wolverine for a mixed-use development, authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute the necessary documents.
Second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote.
Thank you. We're very excited about Wolverine's mixed-use development.
We just wanted to see dirt moving. Okay. All right. Next item, consider an act on the execution of an unimproved property contract with MR Development Corporation and Carlton Development Limited for the sale of 5.91 acres formerly known as the Haunt's Property to MR Development and Carlton Development for a multifamily development and authorize the execution of necessary documents by the mayor or his designee. Mr. Hart.
Yes, Mayor and Council, we're gonna have our Economic Development Director, Elise Back, to lay out this item for you. We also have, uh, uh, the groups with MR Development are here, which is Kim McCaslin and Jeff Füllechek.
So before you, you have the purchase and sale agreement with MR Development and Carlton Development Limited for the purchase of 5.18 acres formerly known as the Haunt's Property for a potential multifamily development. To facilitate the multifamily development, the Economic Development Foundation is selling the nine, I mean, the 5.5.91 acre site, um, to MR Development and Carlton Development for $4 per square foot, which equates to just over $1 million. They are, they are anticipating closing on the property on or before August of, um, next, August 31st of 2020. The EDC board met on December the 13th and made a recommendation that council execute the contract and staff is recommending that, um, council approve the contract as presented.
That's 2023, isn't it?
22.
Two, okay.
Closing April, I mean, August 31st, 2022.
Okay. Is there any questions from council? Okay. I'd entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I would move to approve the unimproved property contract with MR Development Corporation and Carlton Development Limited for the sale of 5.91 acres to MR Development and Carlton Development for a multifamily development, authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute the necessary documents.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous.
We're also excited about this project as well. Thank you.
Okay. Item 13 is being tabled until our next meeting. Item 14, consider an act on the nomination, appointment and removal of board members for the Keep Corinth Beautiful Board. Mr. Hart.
Yes, Mayor and Council, you have interviewed Julie Hill, uh, for that vacancy and we're bringing that forward to you for the appointment of Julie Hill to the KCB Board and removing Terrell Lancaster, uh, from that board.
Go ahead.
Oh, you first.
I was just gonna see if there anybody had any questions or comments. Okay. Then I'd entertain a motion on this.
Mayor, I'd move to approve as presented.
I second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. Item 15, consider an act on the contract amendment number two. Pardon? Consider an act on the contract amendment number two with Jones Carter to add the engineering of North Corinth Street from Walton Drive to North Corinth Street in the amount of $49,650 for a total contract price of $971,340 for design of the streets and park civilian infrastructure and authorize the city manager to ratify any necessary documents. Mr. Hart.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I'd like to have our city engineer, George Marshall, to lay out this item for you.
I don't have any visual pictures today, but, um, at the end of the day, so we had several projects going on. We were discussing, we really wanted to use Lockwood Andrews and Newman on LAN for the railroad crossing closure and NCTC Way because they have a lot of work that they've done with DCTA and DART, who owns that rail line. And so when we were, when we were doing the contract with Jones Carter, we excluded this piece of the roadway because we thought it would be best to put into LAN contract. So we executed the contract with Jones Carter. Then we started working on the LAN contract and it, the more we thought about it with drainage and other things that were going on, it just didn't make sense to, to have that included in the LAN contract. And so this is a, a contract amendment to add that little piece from Walton Drive, the roundabout that we're building north to, to, to NCTC, or to North Corinth Street. So I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions?
So it sounds like we've already allocated that money, we're just moving it from one pocket to the next pocket.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I just have a question, like, just generally. Like, when we go in and amend or make changes to contracts, is there ever, like, a limit on how many you can make before you have to execute a new contract?
I'm gonna let Patricia answer that question because it's more of a legal thing.
Okay. So under the competitive bid statute, you have a 25%, I believe it is, cap of increases if you've competitively bid. This is a professional services contract. So that provision that has the limit, where it says you can't, once you let a contract, you can't increase the price by more than 25%. That's for a competitive bid. This is professional services and it's not subject to that. So, um, you can't competitively bid professional services. It's completely different statutes. So you don't have to worry about it when you're dealing with this type of, of contract.
Any other questions? I'd entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Item 16, consider an act on the ordinance of the City of Corinth approving an amendment to the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget and the annual program of services to appropriate, appropriate and transfer monies from the general funds to the Economic Development Foundation in order to provide for the funding of the purchase of the land by the CEDCF and related closing costs and providing an effective date. Mr. Hart.
Yes, uh, Mayor and Council, uh, this is a budget amendment to cover the cost of land acquisition that you discussed in executive or closed session. Uh, and so that's, it's to take, it's to cover, a budget amendment to cover the cost of the Hoffler and Fritz track.
Oh, oh.
Okay. Uh, and, and so we have Leanne here that can answer some questions on that, uh, but that, that's the essence of what's going on. So in, after you have made the appropriation, then we're gonna ask you to consider three motions arising from closed session.
I have a question. So the land that we're selling.
To Wolverine.
To Wolverine and this other one we just, yeah. Yeah. Does that go back into general fund where we move money or does that go back into EDC fund? Where does that money go?
We always look at, at, at where, where it came from to begin with. The, uh, land to Wolverine came from the EDC, so it goes back there. The, uh, the land for MR Development actually went to the EDF and so the money would go back to that.
So if we move money from general fund to EDC and then we sell the land, does that go back to general fund because it came from EDC?
Well, it goes to EDC, but then comes back to the general fund because that's the origins of the, of the money. So, so we keep the money tra, we keep the money straight between the, the funds, uh, but it always goes back to the, to reimburse the source before we bought the land. Yes.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion on item 16.
Mayor, I'd move to approve the ordinance number 21-12-16-32 amending the fiscal year 2021, 2022 annual program of services for the general fund and Economic Development Foundation funds.
I second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. Are you not voting?
I'm sorry, I was, uh.
Distracted.
I was distracted because I was asking her if I could make the other motions in one motion and she said no.
Okay. It's unanimous. All right. Now we're going back to the items that we discussed in executive session and the first item is CJ Investments LLC versus City of Corinth.
Mayor, I would move to approve the settlement agreement and release between the city and CJNJ Investments LLC and Twisted Motors to resolve CNJJ Investment versus City of Corinth, District Court Number 21-5053-431, with no payment being made by the city.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Cast your vote. All right. All in favor, raise your hand. Vote. Scott?
I'm in favor.
Okay. It's unanimous. Okay. Item number two. Is the, um, that's the item on Lake Sharon?
No, it's the purchase offer from, yes, yes, on the Lake Sharon realignment with TexDOT.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion on that item.
Mayor, I would move to approve the sale of a portion of the property located at the southeast corner of Lake Sharon and I-35 to the Texas Department of Transportation for right-of-way purposes and authorize the city manager to sign documents necessary to close the sale to TexDOT and to convey the property to TexDOT.
I second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. It's unanimous. Scott?
I'm in favor, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Um, item, third item is real estate to deliberate the purchase and exchange lease or value of real, real property or deliberation in open meeting. That is, um, 1.47 acres more or less of land consisting of lots 1, 2, 3, block B, F&amp;H Edition and the Walton Drive and east and north Corinth Street.
And also Lot 1, Block A.
Lot 1, Lot 1, Block A of the F&amp;H Edition. I'd entertain a motion on that item.
Mayor, I would move to approve the purchase of a portion of the F&amp;H Edition located at the northeast corner and west intersection of Walton Drive and North Corinth Street from John Hoffmeyer and Bob Fritz for the properties as described as 6,242 square feet of Lot 1, Block A of the F&amp;H Edition and lots 1, 2, and 3, Block B of the F&amp;H Edition consisting of 1.747 acres and authorize the city manager to sign documents necessary to close the purchase in an amount not to exceed 899, 589.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor? Okay, any further discussion? Okay. All in favor, raise your hand. Scott?
Yes, sir, I agree. Thank you.
Okay. It's unanimous. I believe that's all we have. Okay. Council's comments and future agenda items. The purpose of this section is to allow each council member the opportunity to provide general updates and/or comments to fellow council members, the public, and/or staff on any issues or future events. Also, in accordance with Section 30.085 of the Code of Ordinances, at this time, any council member may direct that an item be added as a business item to any future agenda. Mr. Burke.
Merry Christmas. That's all.
Mr. Garber.
I have nothing, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Hoesworth.
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Mrs. Henderson.
Nothing, sir. Thank you.
Mrs. Pickens.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Hart.
I'm going to echo Sam's comment on Merry Christmas.
Wow. We don't have any, anybody wants to talk tonight. Maybe I stay for a while. But anyhow, again, I just want to say thank you for all your efforts. And, and again, have a Merry Christmas and enjoy the holidays. And we'll see you back here in January. Eric Gend.